I should have two of them. You were that middle one?
Oh, yeah. I was just like, I'm stuck in this room. But Abby does not drive. It's sometimes she... Wait till she made a slide show for her. So I just did like sell them on her. And for the share with families. It wasn't power. That's awesome. But I was like, ooh, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah. And then Katie was like, I don't know how. But I was like, oh. Long hair. I was like...
Like we sat in a restaurant trying to get his W A's.
It's not driving, it's a glass.
Yes.
I remember like, I was ready to take you down and like, don't talk about my sixth grader. And that fan, Katie was like, yeah, yeah, she can. And I was like, huh, she can? Like, was it not accurate? And I was just like, it's not even nice for us, like. What did I know?
Two thousand eighteen. What year? You see twenty-seven to thirty-three inches of snow.
Yes.
So that was a different time.
Oh, that's perfect. I wish I would have had something like, um, for the cat and the dog.
Levi, when's your first game?
November twenty-first in Beaver Dam.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It'll be fast. You could use about three months of practice before you start playing.
And when does, when do you, can you start practice?
Tenth. Yeah. Four practices, a scrimmage against three lakes, and then four more practices before two games. And then one practice, and then we'll play at the nominee, so.
But now you've got like open gyms?
Yeah. We're starting this week after Y Y.
You have zebra?
Yeah.
Well, thanks.
I'm just doing that first.
But not running it stop.
Yeah, Katie, yeah. You don't want everyone to feel like they have a certain amount.
Thank you for working amazing.
You're welcome.
Will Dean be with us?
Yes. Yes, for sure. If I can mention the call.
Okay.
I asked if he wants to get a call. Is it a new or just the continuing FYI list?
Uh, no, it's new.
Cousin. Normally, it's immediate family.
It's not one of the major.
So do you want us to pull it?
All right, just keep testing, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
So is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Hi, hi.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'd like to call the Redbar Monthly School Board Meeting. Please stand from the pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the retained justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Dr. Ebert, Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mrs. Knoll, here. Mrs. Schuman, here. Mr. Shaw. Can you hear me, Mr. Shaw?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Umlin.
Here.
Mrs. Fink, here. Mr. Bords.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Notice was properly posted?
Yes.
Public participation seeing none? Okay, information items. Jamie.
Okay, there's a, uh, the stove was delivered. Uh, there's gonna be a thank you note being sent out for the, uh, the Transition Center, the baking program. I know we'll talk a little bit about the charter school shortly, but there was a lot of excitement that that was, uh, that delivery happened, and they see a lot of, uh, opportunity attached with it.
Okay, thank you. Don't see any Stu Board representatives?
So continuing on with the DA report, there's, um, there's the potential for a new, uh, or a different SRO coming in January or sometime this school year. Just for a change from the police department standpoint, nothing has, uh, nothing has caused this by any, in any way, shape, or form. Just a heads up, at this point in time, we're a few months ahead at the earliest, and we'll see how that's gonna go, and I'll certainly keep everybody abreast of any changes that come with the, uh, School Resource Officer. Continuing on to the second part of four point three, in January, we'll start the first stages in, of, uh, working with Nexus for the strategic plan updates. And with the original plan that was set up with Nexus, there's not any charge, additional charge for this strategic plan to take place. We'll keep everybody up to date as to when that process starts, and it continues.
Very good. Thank you. Next would be the Board Committee and Board Liaison Reports. Charter school meeting? You guys wanna go first?
I wasn't able to attend that.
Um, I think the charter school notes are in here, and I think the biggest maybe update is the landscaping, this will be done outside of the facility, just for aesthetic purposes. Um, and that's all donated, so, um, other than that, there wasn't any, I don't think any huge information that was divulged.
It's exactly the first thing I had highlighted as well, was landscaping. And I just impress upon, there's no cost to the district involved, just like Lisa said. Just for the exterior piece. And the next meeting will be, um, November eleventh for that, uh, as everybody can read on there.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee?
Policy Med, it was Lisa, Tom, and I. Uh, we've had some good discussions. Um, one of the goals we're doing is the eight thousand series we're going through. We picked like ten policies. Just rereading them, um, looking at the words, we try to make sure that all the words are consistent. So like, in one policy, they use the word children. We changed it to students. We deal with students, not children. And just making sure the wording all agrees and everything stays the same. Three of the policies, we're asking you guys for approval tonight. The one is the Board Member Behavior Communications and Code of Conduct. Um, just made some changes in it, in the wording again. And on the second page of the policy, we added item T, um, which is disclosing actual or perceived conflict of interest. Um, we use the word discouraged instead of prohibited. And the other policy, which is the Library and Media Center, there again, we're also trying to use the same vocabulary as we're talking, that it doesn't say library in one policy and media center in the other. We're trying to make it the library media center, so when we're talking about something, everybody knows we're discussing the same thing. Okay? Um, we added item F for you guys to look at on there. Um, and we had some questions on it, so we're looking for your feedback. It was item F to provide instructional materials that will not promote illegal activities through disproportionate emphasis or approval of said illegal activities. Um, and that was a conversation that came up after long discussions of the previous books, things that are happening in our community with, um, some of the kids. Um, so we need you to, to make sure you're okay with that line. Um, the materials in the library, we made those adjustments. Um, what happens with the selection of the process, how parents can, um, come in and, you know, talk about it. That there's a chain of command when there's a problem. They start with the teacher, then go to the principal, before it gets all the way up to us. So if anybody does call with any problems with any of the materials, it goes to the teacher first. They don't come right to us. Okay? Um, and then the other policy, I think that was it. That's what I have. So as long as everybody's okay with the work we have done, we'll need a motion to approve those policies as we made the adjustments. We'll make that motion.
And that's policy P O one four four point five, P O twenty-five twenty-two, and policy ninety-one thirty.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I will make the second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda items. Uh, does anything need to be removed? Okay, if not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here's my.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we have the what?
There's hires for.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so we need a roll call then? Okay, then we're gonna do a roll call, sorry. Uh, due to the hires. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Same.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mr. Bords.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Uh, can I ask one question, though?
Sure.
The thirty-five hundred for covered soccer benches, which benches are they looking to cover? The field house or the?
In the stadium.
The stadium there? Okay. Is it the team benches or?
It is, it's on the sideline, so, um, are we ready for that part?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll give a little bit, and I'm sure Joe will jump in and help too. It started kind of with the JV soccer coach. And there's a couple people, there's a, a couple of Scott and Jennifer Pocket that kind of worked along with it. They purchased them, had an auction, rebuilt them, they prepared them for donation. It's probably, uh, about thirty-five hundred dollars in purchasing materials and about ninety hours of labor. So they're pretty proud to, uh, to do this, and the hope is, they worked with Joe, worked with Emily as well, communicated that ahead of time on the front end. Um, shared some photos, I have one in front of me as well. Uh, they're proud to donate these, and then the hope is that the school's use, and it'll provide a lasting value for all the program, programs and the student athletes involved.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda are action items. Review and approve the assignment of fund balance. From our.
Eric, would you like to step in with this one or no? The fund balance transfer?
So, um, I guess I made it my mission to find that memo, and I found the memo. Um, it was dated twenty thirteen, I believe, I don't have it in front of me. Um, so, and I, I believe at this time, um, just stepping into administration, um, in that same year, um, I remember, um, more seasoned superintendents actually discussing, um, the fact that DPI might be looking at, district fund balances, back thirteen years ago. And, um, so I think some school districts were making that decision, if they had very large fund balances, to put them into a signed account, saying that we're saving this money for something down the road. And at that time, this memo outlines that you were looking at, um, some retirement funds. And, um, I would say we're past that time now. Um, we budget right through fund ten for our retirement benefits. Um, and so the recommendation would be to move that from the assigned into just one unassigned fund balance. And I think it's also very important, as I mentioned at the last meeting, to know that this amount of money isn't just sitting in a bank account somewhere. Okay? Your fund balance includes all of your assets. Um, so just know that as well.
Okay, very good. Then I need a motion to approve moving the assigned fund balance amount of three million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars to the unassigned fund balance.
So.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Do the second.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mr. Bords.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll, yes.
Next then is to review and approve the lease agreement with Howard Young Medical Center and the Star Transition Center. Jamie?
Sure. So this is something that's been here for a couple of months now that we've kind of talked about, and kind of the discussion's been whether it was to, uh, I was, first of all, I don't think I reported back to the board, I've done it individually, but the, uh, we had some questions about where the ten thousand dollars was, was going to, what was it going to cover? And so forth, so I'll, I'll try to read this to be as exact as possible. The month, the amount of rent annually for the year is ten thousand seventy-five dollars. And, and the, the follow-up has brought me to talk to Terry Tyler and Scott Sisney and Greg Walker, and all three of them multiple times. Uh, the first thing was the terms. Um, and this is kind of a thing that we've kind of talked about, whether it was gonna match the, uh, the STAR school or not, uh, with the two years and then, or just the five-year contract. The five years is what's being proposed initially. And Scott shared they're willing to have the term match to STAR contract if it's desired. But he also pointed out that within this term on the contract, there's some verbiage requiring, uh, regarding termination of the lease with a one-year notice for either party, uh, on either side. In terms of the utilities was the next question, Terry shared that the, Terry's the, uh, the president of four of the, uh, um, hospice, Spire's hospitals. She shared that the annual fee is included, maintenance and repairs, utilities, waste removal, something I hadn't considered, pest control, snow removal, and lawn care. And then the final one was number thirteen for concerns, and Terry shared that the annual fee has included taxes. So that's kind of what I was tasked to do, and whatever decisions made, you know, just taking into consideration whether it was, um, there's not, it can certainly match the STAR school if you choose to. Otherwise, it's five years, and I would just think financially, there's always a possibility they could, the price could be increased if we did two years instead of five years. Certainly a board decision, though. And, um, remember that no matter what, no matter what the situation is, there's a one-year notice on either side to, to be removed from the, to be let out of the lease. That's all I have.
Clear. So.
Did you check with Howard Young to see if they're willing to do that?
Right. Um, Scott, Scott Sisney's the one that would determine that, but they're, they're willing to do it. Um, but they pointed out that they should, they shared they're willing to have the term match to STAR contract if that's a desire of the board.
But you're proposing to go five years to keep costs, potential costs up?
Right, and stay consistent with, they've honored their part from a standpoint of it's really backdated to start May first. Okay. But they're willing to be cooperative, and that's probably the most fiscally responsible thing to do.
I make a motion to approve it consistent with our contract of, uh, allegiance, term of release.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
So you're saying the two-year?
Okay. Any discussion?
Sean, what was the motion?
The mo, the motion was to approve the lease with the Howard Young Medical Center and the Transition Center to coincide with the two-year, uh, for two years with the contract with the charter school versus going over for five years. Starting, starting back in May first, twenty twenty-five, and going for five years.
Technically, it's in five years, it went to two thousand thirty-two.
But it's, but it's, it said five years, so. So, discussion?
We're voting on a two-year contract is what we're doing.
Right.
Yes.
Not the five, that was the motion.
I'm at the seven, it's to two thousand thirty-two.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Umlin.
No.
Mrs. Fink.
No.
Mr. Bords.
No.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
No.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
No.
Can I make a motion to approve it at a five-year term as requested by administration, please?
Yes. Now, let me make a correction, look at the number two for terms, it does say going from twenty-five to thirty-two.
Okay. That's fine.
That's seven years, I think. I'll make a motion to approve it at the seven-year term.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
She's typing.
Yeah, take your time.
Take your time.
Yeah.
Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Mr. Bords.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
No.
Mrs., Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
No.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work with that, Jamie. The next and last is the appointment of the elections clerk.
I nominate Lisa Kennedy.
I second. So a motion has been made to appoint Lisa Kennedy as the twenty twenty-six election clerk. All in favor, say? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, suppose because this is money?
Right, we just, we didn't talk about it at all.
Okay. Uh, I need, I need to go back to the consent agenda items where there was approved or denied the Start College Now and Early College Credit Programs. And since there is funding provided for those students, I need a motion to approve the, uh, student application summary for Start College Now and Early College Credit Programs.
I do have a question on, it seems like there are a lot fewer students this year than there have been in the past. A lot fewer.
Yes.
Is there a reason for that? Not that I know of.
I met with a counselor, and I, I think that when they talked about the, this spring is when they tend to have more because of the October deadline, because it's kind of, it's a very strict deadline. And sometimes, I don't, I don't have a reason for smaller amount now, but just the rationale talking. We met because I wanted to learn a little more about it. In the past, it's, there seems to be a little overlap of youth options in the past. But the way the deadlines are and the, for each thing of, of being in the spring for the fall semester, or fall trimester semester, in this case, um, sometimes everyone just isn't quite looking at that far ahead. Certainly a generalization, but because kids are in school, when they get ready to do the spring one, they're, they have the face-to-face interaction, and people are a little more, kids-wise, families, however this looks like. Um, she says they're tend to, tend to be a little more focused on meeting the deadlines. Um, she says they're tend to, tend to be a little more focused on meeting the deadlines and they're very hard deadlines, not soft deadlines. And there's just a variety of courses and they spend a lot of, they spend some time figuring out, uh, communicating with the colleges and so forth. And, you know, it's dependent on the courses, whether it's, uh, Start College Now or not, you know, we're required by a law to offer these courses. So, the approval supports the compliance with state law.
Okay.
Therefore, is an action item.
Therefore, I need a motion? Second? I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bords.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll.
Yes.
Mrs. Schuman.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Umlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Fink.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And then maybe in the future, we'll take those out of consent and make them the all.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
Then, that is it for the meeting, correct?
Right.
Mr. Kep.
Mm-hmm.
Then I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned and thank you very much for attending both meetings.
Is this her record?
Can I add if you're still there? Uh, this phone is whose? Jose's?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank you for helping them all. Welcome. Do you have, uh, the names of the donors again and their mailing address so I can?
Yeah, I can.
Creating.
Hey, how do you want to see the picture? This was one of the two pictures.
That's really cool.
Old man.
My soccer yesterday.
Looks very good. Okay, so it's. Chris Seager. Is, is it his wife too?
Well, that's, that's good. I just tell her thanks.
This one here is Chris Seager. Oh, okay, so, so Park, they're the ones that are actually doing it.
I'm gonna go shopping. I told my girl that, my girl would tuck him in, but it'd be like a. It's not gonna be too early.
Have a good night. And then. Lisa, do you, will you have their mailing address for me?
I'll mail you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Well, I just know that there's always an issue where the trash boys are gonna transport the trash. That's what she does in the orphanage, she's there. But here's the thing. She, she didn't sign all these. At three forty-one. She signed, it could've had a second forty-one.
You want your first?
Your extension court?
Yes.
Um, I did not.
And that's what, I don't know. He doesn't have them because he's so young, because he doesn't allow them to go out. But I had the capability and I need to engage it. And I'm like, ah. As students, and I'm like, let's see. I have a lot of activity.
So we can help you with this.
But, like, these are his kids. Alan, William, Stormy, just. If we find that was his group of people.
Okay. Yeah, roll call for that position. That's how we normally do it.
That was his last time, like, five forty-two. Where was he? I said, let's, October.